Yeah.
Six thirty, let's call it in your order. Roll call.
Fine.
Here.
Panic.
Here.
Ojo.
Here.
Roder.
Here. Here. Okay. Prove for the agenda.
Make sure to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Everyone start with public comment.
Yeah, if there's anyone here that.
Is anyone having anything to?
Not on the agenda.
Okay. Overwind. Consent for agenda items. So say all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Oh, reports, sheriff just left, so.
Well, it's going with H R Green. For engineering activities in March of twenty twenty five, we attended the three twenty four city council meeting. Coordinated with five twenty seven Swisherview Drive for its current use of the septic tank and Swisher code requirement for its sewer connection. We worked on the sanitary sewer lining project, including construction administration, observation, pat one, change orders one and two. And work in the field consisted of all sewer being lined on the project except for the service connection lining for the next week. We reviewed the Swisher sixty subdivision part two preliminary subdivision plat and rezoning request revision. We reviewed a rezoning request for the Miranda Perez parcel. We reviewed sign regulations for the Pleasant Hill subdivision. Coordinated with the new Swisher City and zoning map. For Shelley. We had coordination with Justin Fields for sanitary sewer line on Dr. Smith Avenue between second and third street. Provided existing sewer links for Justin to locate buried manholes around the Apple Valley addition. And we researched utility stub locations for possible builder. On one forty one label. I can give you a copy of this.
Did you and Justin check out anything up on Swisherview Drive where great where last time we had last meeting, we had a complaint about the roads up there?
About the roads, those will that will area will be part of the street reconstruction this we do the annual maintenance plan and that's gonna be.
In this year's budget.
It's been in the spring.
Yep.
Got a year old.
Yeah.
And did Greg?
That's before July.
Was Greg informed of this, anybody?
I talked to him.
Yeah.
He he he's a good. Help to put some hole patch there till you get to you probably don't do that streets all late summer, don't you?
We're actually.
Right in front of his house.
Right in front of Greg's house. Right between Milos and. Friends.
So part of the road, so.
Huh?
It's all washing out even away.
There's a puddle there just.
Keeps kicking, everything's kicking out of it. They put in it.
Water's getting announced being a soft spot and it's getting worse. You have work, you think to do with.
I'll look at it again.
Yeah.
First time I looked at it, it wasn't. I mean, it was pretty. Down like I. It's not deep enough that doesn't really stick in there very well, but I can look at it again and see if. We can go for now.
It wouldn't hurt.
We thought that most of try it anyway.
And hopefully we're beyond the first star that we're popping out.
Washing doing.
Yeah, for us.
What?
So I'll look at it tomorrow, Daryl.
Alright.
Okay, Justin, you want to bring us up to the. Siren and what's going on with it and anything else?
Yeah, I mean, we got. Poles back on the siren. I don't have a date or anything yet. From when they can do it, but they are. Willing to to put it in and bill us after our fiscal year, that way we can get it in and then they do with a bunch of the other cities and stuff to hold the bill until our fiscal budget restarts. Think it's in our next year budget, so. He said that wasn't an issue. They're gonna take this pole without rear and move it to the park. Because this pole here qualifies to the way they need, so. Number two. We don't have any part that is tall enough that's a number two grade two pole that will work for them, so they're wanting. Move this one out there, so that's part of the pull is pull this one down, get the old equipment off of it. Move that and when he he was here, obviously he met with with me and you and Shelley and Mike about that, he said that, you know, we could possibly sell. The old one, some the working habits anyway and recoup some of the cost for what the ones are gonna cost us, so that'll help. With that, as soon as I have a date, though, I'm gonna let you know.
How would we resell that? Maybe us listening together.
Yeah. Dave down at the John's County Mercy Management, he sold some of that stuff in the past on some of those websites, government websites, stuff like that, so. And he probably also has some sound like he has some contacts maybe for. Brad sold some of that stuff in the past.
He said some more down around Colono, he's using the exact same siren that they wanted for parts.
There's only a couple of what we have, it's so old, there's only a couple left in the state or something. So getting getting those out or there's a couple of people that might want for parts that there's that are still using those and then ours will be a newer model, one of the newest models they have it sound like, so.
What's the latest on the bathroom up at the park?
On the bathroom, what part or were yesterday?
Wasn't it closed down?
Yeah, they'll be, we're getting, we'll have those open this week.
They will be up this weekend.
Yeah, we're just kind of wait, we're waiting for the the nights to quit getting down some holes, so it went free, but we'll get it open this week. And then we also, we rocked the parking lot up there and got, we just get Friday, Steve's electric goes out here and got all the ball diamond lights working, so they're all working now. There were some bulbs and then a breaker that was bad. So all the lights, well, I should be working. And then, yeah, we've been working on Cameron, some of the sewer lines, we've had some sewer issues the last couple of weeks and then. This week we'll also start doing some of the ditch work in town. Got locates that were done to start working on some of the ditch work where we had some water backup in the last big rain, so.
Else guys?
I got just one question, what do we add on the five blocks?
The the one that was ordered is in a in a.
It's in.
And so they were using them now?
Yep.
Now we use the last pay period and we and we're on it this pay period, so.
The police reported before Chad sent me and he was unable to make it. I'm sure you guys had the report, but we're still waiting back from Delta, trying to get them to work on the air dryer. The U V's been installed, equal I look good, the first round. It appears we're running a new digest remote pump, water was able to get in there through the wire. So. He said he doesn't have the time for you on that, but that will be a new pump, he said it's been recent six years since it's been like that, but. And we're live and reporting, everything's been in compliance last month, so.
Alright, do you have a question? Sounds good. Okay.
Another next one is a Merrill information. Is for Johnson County and. Whereas benefits of older adults in the communities throughout the county. And whereas May is older Americans' month at a time for us to recognize and honor older adults in Swisher and their influence on every facet of American society. Whereas older Americans improve our communities throughout. Inaugural relationships, community service, civic engagement and many other activities. Whereas older Americans in twenty twenty five theme has flipped the script on aging, focusing on transformation of how society perceives, talks about and approaches aging and encourages individuals and communities to challenge stereotypes and dispel misconception. Whereas the city of Swisher must ensure that older Americans have resources and support needed to stay involved in the community, reflecting our commitment to inclusiveness and correct connectivity. Now, therefore, I Brian One Mott, Mayor of Swisher. Do hereby proclaim the month of May twenty twenty five as older Americans' month in the city of Swisher. Urge all citizens to celebrate profound positive impact meaningful inside interactions and social connections with seniors in the entire community. Number eight, Swisher Esports, back to truck event.
We had a lot of positive responses during the touch and truck event. There will be seventeen members bringing one or two vehicles to the event. And due to the responses of our community members, we had to call the local businesses and that are on Rose and Second Street and asked for their approval for the road closure and they all agreed. But due to event on Thursday at Dancemore, they asked to leave the parking in front of their building where it's mulched to have their DJ park. So I talked with Nick and I asked if the DJ could enter in from the alley from Rose and go behind the black squirrel and next to vault and just pull up in front of Dancemore and he agreed, so. But all the businesses are gonna stay open to provide food as well. And if you guys are interested in knowing who's coming, I'm happy to list off. Who's all coming? No, okay. So the final event information we're having it Thursday, May twenty second from five thirty to seven thirty. And if there's possibility to get a rain date approval, they have it for next Tuesday, May twenty seventh from the same time. And then I know you were saying about the arrivals of vehicles coming, so P and K Midwest is coming. They're gonna be entering about like four fifteen, four thirty, and then all the other vehicles will be entering from four thirty to four forty five parking. Everyone's gonna enter south on Rose Avenue, turn left on Third Street and then left on Central Avenue until all the locations are filled and then we're gonna just go backwards back up to Rose and then onto Second. P and K Midwest is gonna be parking in front of Cava House and Five Star. Five Star allowed us to utilize their parking lot for P and K Midwest for their smaller items that they're gonna be bringing. And the tractor is going to be love unloading at the fire station and driving up the same way to enter. The Army National Reserve is coming and they're going to be parking out in front of Dancemore and Vault Boutique and then the smaller vehicles are gonna be utilizing the American Legion parking lot and then also the other vehicle that is gonna be parking on the streets, so. And then the exit, we are gonna leave the alleyway located north of the Legion for emergency actually exits because we are gonna have a lot of emergency vehicles attending if they need to get out. So street closures, we asked to have Rose Avenue, Third Street, Central Avenue and Second Street Southwest. And if we are able to have no parking signs, starting up at Central State Bank and coming down on to the little park here on both sides of the street. And then also if we could have the alleyway that connects from Rose to Jefferson, so they can pull out through the alleyway to make a safe exit if they need to exit. And then the closures for the barricades to have it after Cava House main parking entrance, they requested that they have people utilizing a parking lot. And then the intersection between Merkin Thompson and Rose Avenue, the intersection between Rose Avenue and Third Street and the intersection of Central Avenue and Third Street. I can send Shelley if you'd like.
Is that on your on the agenda request original?
I also, I believe so.
Okay, cuz those are all approved.
Yeah, cuz I think I had to actually open up Second Street and I think.
So that's the additional.
That's the additional street. And then, yeah, we're gonna have a table out there and you know, people wanted to something with Swisher Esports, so we're just happy to have this community event and thankful for all of our community members and you guys to be going to have this event here and just making it easy in the process of it all easy, so we appreciate, you know, the city providing road closures and.
So maybe the council just wants to approve Second Street?
Motion we approve.
Second. All in favor? Opposed? So moved.
And also the rain date, is that okay to do? Okay. Thank you.
Let's see official date on it again.
The official date is Thursday, May twenty second. And the rain date is that next Tuesday.
She has more to go.
Yeah.
Yeah. Not anything for the street closures or the touch and truck event.
For the Colonel's Grant, we did re, we did apply for a five thousand five hundred dollar grant, we received one thousand dollars, so we did receive something. So we're going to apply that towards our pitching machine and batting cage improvements. And then we're also going to work with community members to get the the underlayment area and some some turf put down for that pitching pitching machine and batting cage area.
Yeah, I mean, we've raised money from sponsorships, donations and fundraisers to you know, improve the park, so that's something that we'd like to do is pumping down the diamond.
Part of getting a pitching machine is we'll need permanent power essentially on that pole down there.
Need approval on that video?
We'll just need to make sure it's on, so that the power is always available on that pole down by the shed, by the shed.
You guys already have the pitching machine ordered, correct?
We do not.
You don't.
Don't have an electrical pitching machine, it's on order that we have this right now, yes.
Mechanical right now.
Is the junction box on one of the poles able to be plugged into or do we have to figure out something?
Honestly, don't know. I didn't really.
This is just.
That well.
Yeah.
I just know I'm gonna need power all the time.
So that maybe something we have to get a quote on.
We have extension cords and things, but.
It's all just one thing though, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Look into it and see what it's. It's actually there.
Justin, can I put that on your list?
I don't want to down yet.
Yeah.
So the project would include of the removal of the current batting cage net, the removal of the current ground covering. And then we are going to add the new ground covering, leveling it to make sure that there's proper water drainage for the actual turf that we're going to put down. And then the installation of that and then installation of a new net. And, you know, we have, we put out that for local volunteers to help and there's a couple, you know, local people that are volunteering, but we may need to, you know, have more for this to come together and be finalized and we'd like to have this done by May, because that's when our summer fall starts, so. Things are, everything is ordered, it's just they haven't got here yet.
Have we posted anything for getting volunteers on our?
Swisher Esports posted and I shared on the Swisher Strong and that's where people have stepped up, Chad Haug is actually willing to work with us as well.
And send some of them.
Yeah, yeah.
It's been sharing, yeah.
Yep, yep. We just, we don't know what it all entails, you know, we are just trying to better.
Like any project, you don't know what you're gonna need, so you could.
You're just need labor.
We just need help.
Body area.
You know, yes, we don't want to put this much money into a batting cage and we do it wrong.
He's gonna YouTube it.
He's gonna use the same poles that are there.
Yes, so we're gonna use the same poles, hopefully using the same hardware, we are, there is hardware that ordered, but yeah.
Okay.
Yep, the poles will be staying there.
Yeah, the biggest thing with for like the problem we've had in the past where we always have to move, cuz that net's not great, but if you can stake the bottom of it down, so it's not blowing and when we're trying to mow and stuff.
Yeah, we want to leave a perimeter so that.
Yeah.
There's no grass or anything for you to have to mow up that close.
Okay, cool. Alright. Anything else on your list?
And then just one more thing, we just wanted to recognize and say thank you for the bench improvement in the outfield. And also Justin, thank you for mowing, it looked nice up there, we were up there at practice. The field looks great and we just hope that it can stay, it can be this beautiful and all season long. With that said, there is just a lot of hands and help that needs to keep the field maintained, so we aren't sure who to address our concerns with for maintaining the field. It's just mowing the weed control on a scheduled basis and also dragging the field because Swisher Esports does not have the equipment to complete these tasks. You just, if you go up there now, it looks tremendous, you know. And just don't want it to get out of hand to where we can't maintain it.
So typically typically in the past, we have, I mean, other than when we tried to fix, when we worked on fixing it good last year, typically we haven't broke the field for you sports, they've always. When I got here a couple of years ago, there was a three or four wheeler down there that we got rid of because it didn't have a key, didn't run. And I think Chad, I think he'd gone down with this four wheeler and drug it, I guess we just need to figure out if that's something that we're gonna do, we can do it, we can run down there with like our Kubota and do it. If we need to do that, or if that's something you guys wanna do, we seem to figure that out and figure out a schedule as far as when we wanna do it, you know?
Yeah.
No problem working with you guys on that, if that's something that we need to do for you, I just need to know how how we're doing that. The other thing would be, I guess that has for you guys is, we do have this year, Chir Green is doing our weed control this year. And they are on a schedule, however, if you guys see something that I don't see and you think we need to get it taken care of, just let, you know, when I can call them, they'll come back out. I'm gonna say it's part of our agreement with you, so just let me know. I'm gonna try and keep a really good eye on it, so it doesn't get like it was last year because last year was terrible. But if you guys wanna talk to me this week or something about as far as dragging the field, we can figure out what we wanna do with that.
That should be the, if if it's our responsibility, the town's responsible to go and mow it, it should be our responsibility to drag it, too. I think you guys just got lucky that somebody was doing it before for.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it was just never anything that it was just always done and, you know, in the past, I think when the other esports thing was going with the Reds or whoever that was. So.
Don't you guys agree? I mean, we're taking care of the lawn, we take care of the fields, too, right?
Dragging it.
Yeah.
That's it, thank you.
Back to Sheriff, there is a report. Let's hear a question in the air. Everyone being good around here?
Alright, well, thank you for stopping in.
Thank you.
Hey, number nine. Request Amanda. For Reversive Services.
Yes. Did everybody get to read the? Okay.
Yeah.
Of course, I knew it all this, so I didn't even give myself a copy of that. Anyway, so we had some sewer backup. And I'm this, I'm Amanda and this is my mother, she was kind of helping with some of it cuz I'm not always able to get my care center, so I'm not always able to get where I could meet with everybody that was working on it, but anyway, so we worked with All American Plumbing and Justin was also in contact quite a bit with them in this, but shortly after the lining got done in the sewer, we backed up really bad into our house and so I called the All American, they came out and he ran this thing in and worked on it for like two and a half hours, couldn't get through, couldn't get it cleared. So then, I think at that point, I think he got ahold of Justin and talked to him and they was thinking that there was some kind of blockage that was causing our sewer to say block. Result of of the lining, the city lining. So then, as far as I know then, so then they came, cleared out, as far as I was told, you know, I I spoke either from Justin or the All American, whether they were cleaning it out, there was some stuff in in front of our drain hole or whatever and some other neighbor they said, but.
Well, Bernie, Bernie had a flood in his basement and then his sink and stuff. And the people south of you, that whole straight south of you.
They they had me looking, but I guess we're just. Anyway, so then they they came out, did the clearing and then then I, so that was on the, sorry, that was the twenty seventh, so then on the thirty first, because let's see. The twenty seventh was when he came out to us and then so then the twenty eighth would have been when he, when the city did their thing or the city called and had the people come back out and Justin was part of that. And then, then it was the weekend and it, cuz it didn't clear my drains, my drains did not then go down. So then, and so we, I just stayed with my mom for the weekend because I didn't wanna have the chance to have to be in charge for the hour, you know, hours, we couldn't use anything in the house. It flooded up into the basement, everything.
There was several things ruined in the basement, unfortunately. That didn't happen at all ways and then they couldn't use their rest, threw another sink or anything.
So then on the thirty first, All American came back out, ran there, stopped again, cleared it and then we're good to go, so. Thought saw that.
Is that the line that's a line?
They did not.
They work on that one?
No.
This year or this, was it one of you that?
They, we don't have a plan for that one, that one was in good enough condition that we didn't have to line that line.
Do you have a final with?
I I'll just tell you, and I'm just, this is just my facts from what happened during the whole thing, so I'm taking this personally.
Yeah.
So we had the original call from them that they were backing up and I had Dave Schmidt come out cuz they were the quickest and and run a camera. And their camera got stuck about three foot in from the manhole at the intersection right here from that one south. He said it looked like grease almost, I'm not sure if it was grease or if it was maybe some debris from cuz they lined this third and they lined second and third going this way, but nothing in between, so we're not sure if it was just some debris or grease or what, so he couldn't get through about three foot in from that manhole, the intersection. So then he went, got his jetter truck, came back and jetted it and when they jetted it, I know the neighbor city south of them got some water back in their basement and they probably got some as well, those lines I think are kind of flat going there. But then they camered it. When he, when he initially camered it, let me preface this part, the the water was still flowing, he just couldn't get past the obstruction with his camera and the water was not very deep. Not even close to the bottom of their services where they would be. There was just an obstruction that his camera couldn't get past, but the water's still flowing around it. After they jetted it, they, I asked them to run the camera because we didn't have great footage from before, so I had them run the camera again from manhole to manhole down that block just to make sure he's got video of all the services, cuz initially we were thinking that that line was lined and maybe they just didn't cut their service out or they cut it out all the way and I talked to Melissa about it, it wasn't, that line was not lined. So we've got good footage now of it and everything's open and he did that, yeah, on a on a Friday, the been the twenty eighth. And then I talked to them and I said, hey, let me know if anything happens over the weekend, you know, and and I didn't hear anything and then Monday morning, their plumber called me back and said he was coming back out there and guessing that was the All American, Casey.
We didn't hear any, excuse me, but the weekend it. Excuse me, but the weekend, it was flooded, but we just, the price cost, we waited until Monday. Is why you didn't.
No, I understand, I just wanted to know if it was still backing up or anything, and then, Monday morning, he called me and said that they were still backed up, which. I have the camera footage even still of the water that's flowing down there, and it's not even close to their service, and so he was gonna go try and do their floor drain. Um, in the end, when, when everything was said and done, um, he called me back and he said, I think that the main problem is because. Uh, they have a water saver toilet, it doesn't put enough water down, and so kinda, the toilet paper will kinda build up, because then you get flushed completely. Because it is a water saver toilet, but in the end, I, I mean, and I hate to say this to you guys, but it's, it wasn't anything with the city main. Because on Monday morning, when our lines were clean, you were still backed up, and water was flowing through our lines.
Okay, from what I understood, what he told me was that the original backup. You know, like, caused everything to come up, because we were.
He told me that he ran a hundred and fifty foot of snake, or, or maybe it was you guys that told me, he ran a hundred and fifty foot of snake down the line, and, I mean, your house is only like. Thirty, forty feet off the main line, so we're not, even when I talked to that guy at All American, he's like, I don't know where my line went, he said something about the neighbors could hear it. When he dropped it in, but he's not sure, he told me he wasn't sure if it was. Um, hitting something and he was just kept feeding it, or if it was, if it did, he wasn't sure is what he had told me, but. All I can tell, I mean, I'll just end with, all I can tell you is. The wa- the backup at the beginning of the pipe where we had, that the camera couldn't get through, water was still flowing, and it wasn't deep enough that. When it had got to their house, that it would have been blocking their service connection anyway.
Okay, so when the.
It's odd that it also blocked up Bernie's and the people south of us.
Well, I, what I had heard, who's Bernie, he's in the north?
In the brick house.
Okay, what I, I mean, just from hearsay, and what I had heard, I, I don't remember who told me, but what they told me was that. They didn't think that he had had a backup issue, but that he had just got the smell and stuff from when we were lining it, I'm not sure what.
That was the one south of us, but Bernie's.
Just across the street from us.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I don't know anything about the.
He came up with his kitchen sink, it's my brother.
He's on the east side of the road? Okay, yeah, I didn't hear anything about it.
I think he told Jim that it had backed up in his basement, too.
Yeah, we, you forgot about the kitchen sink, you got the basement down.
I'm just, and that, was that before we jetted it, or was that when we jetted it, because if it was when we jetted it, that, it could have pushed, I don't know, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You sound just like.
Like I said, I'm just, I'm just telling what we saw, and I, I, just from.
Well, as far as the toilet, it's never caused a problem in the past, never. Yeah, it's.
Hey, we're, we're looking at six hundred and sixteen dollar bill.
And that is just for the. Yeah, that, you know, things happen, I mean, yeah, anyway.
Well, you know, with my brother out there, what I think is, you know. If they're taught it plugged up their place, they shouldn't have plugged up his house across the street, I would think.
Well, they don't use it that much.
They're, they're across the street.
Yeah, I, I mean.
And he, he said he'd put it up himself, so I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, the camera footage that I have, I, and I'll just repeat myself, it shows that, I mean, the water wasn't deep enough to even get up to where the service is, the bottom of the service was cut in, so. There was nothing in the main that would have been blocking.
And even while whatever work they were doing on the other, other ends, because it happened right after that, no. I don't even, I mean, I don't. I know nothing about this, so.
Yeah. If the water would have been backing up to where it was blocking, I mean, we would have, their camera would have been underwater, I mean. You know, and your neighbors to the south of you would have got it first, because the water flows to the south, so the neighbors to the south of you with the mailboxes there. They should have been backed up before you guys.
They got a lot of smell, is what they got.
Yeah, they told, they told me they didn't back up at all, though, that's, and coming back up this, you know, if the water was blocked down at third. And, and coming back, it would have blocked them before it blocked you guys, and then it did block it all.
So, I, I would get, my brother's sick.
The only thing I think of is when it, I mean, if it would have been when we jetted it, or if he's got his own, or if you and his line, I mean, I don't. I don't know what else to tell you on that, I honestly.
What happened before, here's what happened before the jetting, because we heard about it. Um, from somebody that had, Jim, yeah, Jim Neenek, who had stopped from there. But visiting after his tragedy, yeah.
Typically, if the wa- if like, when, when the jetting pushes back, it's usually because the line's too flatter, the house isn't embedded properly. I'm not sure if it was before the jetting, I mean, it could be, I mean, he could have an issue in his line, too, it could be, it could be coincidental to both.
So you're sure, I mean, the house south of us was built a lot later than. Bernie's and ours, hers was.
Yeah, ours was.
I mean.
What do you mean, those down, the main? I mean, the main, the water flows that way, you can watch on the camera running down, running that way, in the pipe.
When we were taking the, uh. And things out with, down ours, this neighbor south of us said it sounded like it was coming through the floor of their basement. Didn't explain why that would happen.
I, I can't, I talked, I even talked to your plumber about it, and he wasn't sure either.
That's why I'm wondering about the connections, and if they're just like, that's something different underneath.
I tell you, there's, on the video, I can see three connections on that block, which are the. One, two, and three. Um, all the way down there, actually, I only saw three, so I'm not sure what your brothers is tied into, because I only saw the ones on the west side of the road. Yeah, I'm not sure, brother. I think there's only three on that video.
It's gotta go somewhere. You need the sewer bill every month, isn't it?
Yeah. They did, with the, the video was so long that they displayed it in the two, so there could be a chance that I missed that connection when I switched over, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but. I know that the three on the west side were all open.
I think council has pretty much a recollection of the fact, so, I'll just make a motion so that we can discuss, uh, motion to submit. Claims to our insurance.
I don't know that we really necessarily want to submit it to insurance for a six hundred dollar.
No, absolutely not.
Okay, I was just saying, like, based on what you did on the last issue, I didn't know, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
This would have been under permanent application, we're indemnified from it, but this is not one of those applications.
Uh, so.
I guess, uh, one thing I'd be concerned with is what Justin is saying as far as clearing. And stuff, and this all got taken care of that way, and then now we, we turn around, reimburse here. If you have another issue with your line, because of something else, that is not the city's. Problem.
Oh, right.
Well, it wouldn't be, because we wouldn't be doing any work around that.
Yeah.
Right, but I, what I'm saying is, if we're not seeing an issue when, before he went and had the line cleared out. And now he got the line cleared out, going forward, there shouldn't be any more issues, hopefully.
Right, yeah.
But what I'm saying is, for us to reimburse for something that we're not really sure. If you guys have an issue with your own line, that may have to be cleaned out.
I would understand it if she had previous problems, but there were no previous problems for years.
Or if you, or if you have problems in the future.
That's kinda where I'm going here.
Well, I'm just saying.
Well, it's not like I'm gonna come back and say, oh, now I'm, this must be caused from you guys, because you haven't even done any more work here.
If you haven't done anywhere.
You haven't done work, so.
Do you know what, what material the, the line is made from?
I think that's a clay line. It looked like on the video.
Their services.
Looked like it, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Did Dave Schmidt laterally launch by chance?
No. Um, I just, the only thing I can reiterate is that we jetted it on Friday and Monday morning, they still were clogged. Our line was flowing over the weekend, and they were still clogged on Monday morning.
We never got, yeah, it never started, it never went out, from what I heard, it was because it pushed it, I mean, it pushed everything up in there, and then if we were using it. You know, at first we were using it, and then we're like, everything started coming up everywhere, everywhere in the house, it was coming up.
If there was a little house infected, I'd say, yeah, it could be the problem, but there's more than one house, and I think, you know, it's gonna go either way. I'm in favor of taking care of it.
Was so, you have a motion and, and second to submit to insurance, so.
Well.
I think Cody wants to amend it. I, I think Cody wants to not.
Not submit to insurance, just to pay his work.
Right.
I, I mean, I, I agree, we don't know exactly where the blockage happened, where it occurred. I'm not one to just believe in pure coincidence that three houses had issues right after we had it, um. Something like, you know, six hundred dollars worth of claims, yeah, I think we should just pay it, so.
Yeah, they, they may have some additional expenses, we were talking about that thing.
But I'm not asking for that, that's something we'll just gradually.
Okay, that's, that's one.
Yeah.
Now the time to talk at one point.
No, well, it's like old hockey, like my husband's hot, or my, not my husband, my, my son's hockey equipment and clothes and. Uh, different stands that are down there, stuff like that, it's not a finished basement, so it's.
It's not.
You know, if it was like a finished basement where I had carpet and all that, yeah, yeah.
It's not like a worship or a.
That's a decision only you can make, we can't make that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, yeah, I'm not gonna, we'll just gradually take care of it, but, uh, big sum at once is too much.
We'll just have a lot at the city waste.
Yeah.
Um, the lining was done in early March, we can do it on a, a date two later. On the second and the third.
Okay, not the, not the cross one, though.
We didn't do the. Just for the timeline.
Yeah.
Change, okay, that roll.
Stag. Keenick. Rover.
Hi.
Klein.
Hi.
Poojil.
My nine ten is hearing for.
So. Um, notice was published, posted, um, no comment received at City Hall prior to the meeting. There's no one online.
It's open to be, resolution eleven, twenty twenty five, consideration, approval's fiscal budget, twenty five, twenty six. Hi.
Keenick.
Hi.
Poojil.
Hi.
Rover.
Hi.
Stag.
Hi. Number twelve, resolution twelve, twenty twenty five, proof for, aim for patient number two, hundred and seventeen thousand. For lining of pipes.
Motion to approve, resolution twelve, twenty twenty five, second.
Keenick.
Hi.
Poojil.
Hi.
Rover.
Hi.
Stag.
Hi.
Klein.
Hi. Alright, number thirteen, revolution thirteen, twenty twenty five. Change order to increase approval lining for nine thousand six hundred and eighty-fourty-five cents. And complete that section. Twenty three, resolution thirteen, twenty twenty five, second.
Poojil.
Hi.
Rover.
Hi.
Stag.
Hi.
Klein.
Hi.
Keenick.
Right. And I think if you guys remember, that's coming out of this.
More budget? No, um, so. Approximately six hundred dollars, uh, will have to come out of the sewer budget.
Okay, yeah. Most of this recovery. Hey, review of solid waste recycling bonus. Then you'll have to get through, you guys have a chance.
Yeah, so just so all of the contractors who are here, um, no, I did put together, I don't know. I, I finally got this thing done late Friday afternoon, packets had to go out, I didn't send it out to you guys, but it is out there online. I don't know if you saw it in the packet, okay, very good, so it took me a long time to get through all of the details, I, you know, I called a few of those questions. Um, and I did send the whole packets, whatever, you know, some of you had, um, sent the electronic and I stand the rest in. Council had everything over the weekend, so it was, and like I let them know, this is a lot of information, it took me literally. Until two in the afternoon, just to get through picking out some of the, you know, some of the more important details. What is the price, what is the contract term, um, are they pick it, wanna pick up weekly or biweekly, um, how's yard waste gonna work? How is both the items gonna work, so. It's up to, it's up to the council, if they had time for the weekend to actually go through all of them, um, there are hard copies here. For the council, too.
I think at, at this time, what I would like to do is, is spend a little more time going through all of this for bids. Everything, because I really haven't had a chance to look through all of it, I've only been able to go through a few of them. Um, I don't know if this council thinks, but I would like us to at least wait till the next meeting before we award. Anything, uh, this would give us time to do our due diligence. Plus, if you'd have any questions or anything that may arise when you're also looking through these bids. And everything, because we haven't had an opportunity to actually formulate questions. I know Shelley has had a chance to ask a few things.
Yeah, just, just questions that I had on, on a few.
Well, can we ask those questions tonight?
Sure.
If we have the people here.
I, I, and I don't know exactly, I see S and J, I know Republic's here, I know Smith is here, I'm not sure, is N and N, yeah, and are you? With S and J or?
Yeah.
She's our customer service manager.
Oh, okay.
Kleesner.
Oh, oh, okay, Kleesner's is here, too, so.
Listen, L R S, he did show.
And waste management, right?
They never.
My question is, though, I mean, you're, Cody, you're saying that couldn't we ask questions tonight?
Yeah.
But there may be things that we don't have questions yet, without looking for this. And you, you might not think of anything until after this meeting into next week.
The one question I did have for the council and you guys both, um, a couple of you have recycling done every other week. With a larger tote, um, at least thirty percent of our citizens are older. And that's a bigger, a much larger container for them to move around, I think that may be more of an issue. For our citizens than I originally thought.
That, that's not the only issue either, the bigger the container you have sitting out there, the days we got the windier days, is the day we're gonna have. More strips along around the yards if they don't get picked up before they come to, that's what a big problem has been so far, is. You can look at my place, I got my.
When you go look at my place, I got my whole friggin yards full of garbage all the time.
Recycle.
Recycle all the time, so, but I don't know if that's something we've done, maybe.
Most of us have thirty five gallon, I I told Shelley, I forgot to put it in, but most, I mean, we can take a quick survey, then most of us have. Smaller containers for older people than, I was like trying them, they wanna go back, but yes.
Yeah, that was just some of the things, one of the questions I had after last Thursday's opening. But I was gonna wait for the comment from these guys.
Couple of comments that I've got from citizens so far is is the actually the price of our stuff already. So I know that that's not, that's a, that would be a hot button button issue too, if we have to raise it after we just raised the sewer about three different times. Now and then we raise the garbage again, it's not, it's not something that anybody's in favor of, you know, the. Alright, I shouldn't say anyone, I said some people are in favor of.
What's our current rate, Shelley?
Eighteen fifty.
Yeah. Really, Kurt, cuz uh, I think we're also having a sewer raise in July, we.
Right, I know.
I don't know when we're gonna have it.
So my my biggest thing, cuz I don't like to waste people's times, that's my biggest holdup of like, I'm not saying make a decision tonight. But at the same time, I don't wanna sit and look at this and require all these companies to then have to come back to another meeting.
I understand.
Knowing, well, then we might not go with her.
But I think they all know well too that sometimes that happens, anybody that has experience submitting a proposal, especially this. Type of proposal knows that it can take a few meetings.
Right, and I and I think, you know, anytime you're contracting out for a service like this. Or if it's an engineering service or it's something else for the city, you need to do your due diligence and vet. What you're looking at and make sure that this is, this makes sense for the city here. Cuz we've had some issues with the current current contractor that we got now.
Well, that's the only reason they're up for bid.
Well, I'm just saying, we have, we have some issues with them now, we didn't have issues with them before. And I don't know if something happened there when it got sold or anything else, but going on. I think we need to do our due diligence here and take our time to make sure that all your questions are answered. If we have extra questions, we can then, we can get them to Shelley, she can, she can ask them. So we have them all answered by our next meeting, which is only two weeks, and at that time, we can come to a decision.
Well, I got a question while they're here, uh, for N and N, actually. Uh, in your proposal, it says, properties with two or more units will be provided a dumpster rather than carts, what is a property considered two or more units?
It's four or more, and we don't, we don't have to, it just gives us the option to.
So like if you have, like other cities do, like a fourplex or less, we'll go through the city billing still, so it's not considered like a commercial property. So anything with a fourplex or less, we can come in and be like, hey, four carts here doesn't make sense, let's put a two yard.
Yeah, eight carts, right.
But yeah.
It's an option.
It would just be to limit the containers and technically that way you don't have cars sitting.
So you guys are just putting like a little dumpster there.
Maybe like a two yard, like a facility, yeah.
Yep.
Less blowing over, less mass, stuff like that, so.
Yeah. I don't know if you guys.
I said we do that on the streets to go blow towards my house too.
And and I don't know if you guys even have any in town, we just put that in our contracts, so there are some of the four flexes where it's hard. There's not a place for customers to like wheel them into the middle of a parking lot, for example, and so it just gives the option. For us to replace it with a dumpster if we need to, but not charge any of the customers anymore than than what a cart would cost them.
I just know for a fact that there's no way the condos would ever go for that in the association up there with.
It's more, more so it's like.
Apartment. Yes, and it's not an in-force thing, it's more of like, if we feel like we would benefit and you guys would benefit, we'd bring it to you and come to a mutual agreement type setup, so.
The only ones that you've got with Foreman, Department, Johnsons, Johnsons, right?
So how do you build those dumpsters, is there's one dumpster for a multi-unit?
It would be based on how many people are in that, so if it was, it'd be the however you guys bill it, right? So we would just charge you based on the number of homes or residents that.
Dumpster, okay.
That we're serving, so if there's, we would just bill that directly to the city, right, so. So if you're paying us for three hundred and eighty homes, it's three hundred and eighty homes, regardless of whether we have a dumpster there or four carts.
And Kurt here, playing about bigger dumpsters having more to blow around, I think it just happened in our neighborhood, so I I've seen it, it doesn't empty out more, but. The one thing with the bigger one biweekly, it's heavier, so it's not as likely to.
I just wanna make this so we can, I don't know when, when the company was sold or what happened with our current company, but um. They took out a dumpster from the park that had a lock on it, so we have a lock on one at the park right now, which we need because people are throwing trash in there. We need to get one back that has a chain and, uh, because one we have down there now doesn't.
You think the dumpster is missing or?
No, it's just, we used to have a lock in, now it doesn't have a lock in.
So people, other people come and dump their trash in.
Are there any companies that you would strike off this list of?
Not at this time, I haven't lifted it at all. That's what I'm saying, I myself, I don't feel comfortable awarding a contract.
I'm not saying award, I'm just saying strike off, but suddenly we can take that down real quickly. Ten call references, I'm happy to.
And that's, and and yeah, that's twenty one references, so.
And that's, that's another thing. Talking to Shelley earlier.
Yeah.
She hasn't had a chance to talk to references.
Yeah.
So.
As I know, I told you I was gonna try today, that's what happened.
Yeah.
We can, we can move it to the agenda on the next meeting to discuss and award it. I just think we should take the time to go through all of this and make sure that we're. Coming up with it.
Can you not put a sewer problem before?
In this town.
And truly, just from experience, um, you know, the council wished to go out for our piece, right, as a whole. And you had seven people respond, I think that's important to give all a fair shot to review the entire proposals.
Yeah.
In in their entirety.
I would say we wish it was fourteen fifteen till next meeting.
I think it's, I think it's very important, though, that we, whoever's, you're giving these references for, somebody follows up with that, because. We could be in the same situation, if we don't follow up with any references anymore, and say we awarded to Joe Schmo. And we have the same problems that we have now, and then basically.
Absolutely, if that's, if that's a task that the council wants me to do, I will do it, but it's gonna take more than than one day to be able to get it done.
I would think like by the end of the week, or possibly by next morning or something, if we had something that was emailed. Where you had some information for us, it would help.
Yeah, I can see what I can get through.
But in the meantime, you know, we can take our time going through these proposals.
I you you'll wanna make a motion to table, you know.
Where's my table, line I was fourteen fifteen till, um, that being the twenty eighth meter, twenty ninth.
Oh, yeah, it's on that Tuesday.
Twenty nine.
No, no, April doesn't have a.
Oh, yeah, no, it's the twenty eighth, that's the eighth, yeah, the twenty eighth meeting.
Second. Hey, oh, favor?
I.
You want sixteen ash trees in right away?
Will you believe it?
I don't wanna.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, you guys are personal, our dad's our buddy.
Yep, yep. I'll definitely make sure one other time.
Sir.
Well, they cleared it out.
Yeah.
I didn't know the reason anybody was here, if they want money.
Okay.
Well, you're stuck, yeah.
Okay, ash trees in a row, in the past, since that ash bore has been an issue. And we found out, checking a lot of our trees in town and stuff, some of them had it, some of them didn't. So what we were trying to do is go around, identify the trees that could get treatments, try and save as many as we could. Some of them since have gotten ash boards, some of them haven't. So we still have some ash trees in town that are still viable, are still good. What I'm advocating is that we still treat whatever trees we have going forward. Until such a time that we're, that it's determined that they're no longer viable.
What's that have to do with the right of way, though?
We only treat trees in the right of way.
You know, oh, what we've done, what we've done in the past is we've contracted somebody to do the treatments. And then we've asked individuals in town that have ash trees, if.
On their private property.
On their private property, if they also wanted to get treatment, they could, they could get the same rate as what the city was getting for doing theirs. The treatments are done every two years.
How much have we spent?
Uh, that I don't.
I I can't.
I don't know what the treatments cost, I know we used to, we used to budget five grand a year for removal, um, I'm not sure what the.
It varies on the diameter of the tree.
Mike, do you know the company that was, that was here the last time that treated?
Uh, you'd have to look.
Do you know roughly the prices?
That's okay.
What the price was for a tree. I've got, I've got a great big one in the back of my house that I have treated every two years. And I think the last time I had it treated, it was around. Memory serves me, it was like three hundred and fifty bucks or three hundred and seventy bucks.
It's not cheap.
No, it's not a cheap thing to do.
I've been doing it for six years to the tree in my front yard, and if I don't have to cut it down this year, I'll be amazed.
I see, you're putting off the inevitable, you are.
That's what I think.
Right. That's what I'm saying, you might like.
You're throwing bad money after, you know, good money after a bad problem, that inevitably.
How many of these ash trees do we have in our right way?
Well, when we say right of way, we also mean our our city property too, right?
Parts of it.
Mark, not just, yeah, okay.
We're talking along the streets, we're talking in the alleyways.
Yep, yep, I just want, I do that, I just wanna make sure we were talking about city property too.
We had a list of, and throw a number out, eighteen trees total, but when I first got here. We removed six at the park and a couple in town, and then some of them got included with. One of the projects, so I'm not a hundred percent sure on how many are left. But there's probably a handful left of the ones that were on that list that we were budgeting five grand for every year.
There's probably.
I didn't check that list, included the ones we did up on social media.
No, it didn't.
No, those, those were added in as extra, or like a separate thing.
The D N R came back last fall to restart the city and verify that everything in the right way, and those were the only ones that we're missing. The ones up on social media.
What is the D N R involved in, is it just a city issue, or was it D N R have to do with it?
The D N R is monitoring, um, the Emerald Ash Board statewide, so when the city requests that they come and count trees. They will come and there's an online map on the D N R website. And you can drill down to your city and see where those trees are and everything.
It's illegal to take them out of their area, it's illegal if you cut those trees down and take them out of the area, like they can't leave the state.
They can't leave the county.
Sorry, excuse me, so if we cut these ash trees down, they can't leave this county, that's why the D N R is involved, is because they have. They wanna trace stuff.
Trying to limit the spread.
Good luck.
I know, seriously.
A lot of the trees initially, when this issue came up and we, we were talking in here about treating what we can treat. Most of the trees that were infected were up at the park, up in that area, and those had to be taken out. And then since that time, there's, there's been around town, but there's residents that don't treat, they never did treat their trees, and a lot of those got infected.
I had to go through some files on Thursday and I found an ash tree. Map, I'm not sure when it was started.
Are we all kind of under the circumstances that people? You don't think there's one thing? Trying to save them as they are wasting?
I guess my question to the D N R, if we decide to remove, move them, can we do it?
Yeah, you could bring it up.
Oh, see, they can't stop us from doing it.
No.
Okay, I don't know if they're controlling it.
No, they're not controlling that at all. They just have.
I just didn't know how many of these are.
They have trees in the city limits. And then it's up to the municipality to determine if they wanna treat or if.
Where are they, where are they, where are they taking out? Where are they taking the trees that the D N R is monitoring, where the dead trees are going, if they stay in the county or not? Do you know?
I.
I gotta say, I don't know how you control that.
I don't know, usually when you contract with a tree company, they have a chipper and they chip them right there on.
I just saw it today.
They didn't get chipped here.
I I don't know, I'm just saying that's typically what I see, but I.
Okay.
I need to get that one scot.
Otherwise, I don't.
We have a number of how many we have.
I just wonder with that, I just wonder how much control they have over us, we we.
This one's still here, I think, or no?
Well, it's.
Oh, we removed that one too. That was one of those fourteen.
I would have to look, okay, because I have them right in the. Since they were printed here, but I have a spreadsheet in, and maybe.
Right, two years.
And we've been keeping track on there, what had been removed.
I just have to figure out which one we took out and then which ones were separate out by the project.
I have that, I have that spreadsheet from Tanya.
Okay.
And we've been trying to start.
Yeah, cuz I gave Tanya, based on like the ID number.
Yeah.
And we checked. Okay, yeah, so we can figure out which one. Yeah, I made that list for which IDs have been taken out, so, okay.
I also have the two, four, four across from down at the farm last year, that's still standing. They're getting one door now.
I did get a call on, I'm not the tree expert, but I got a call on, or that Shelley passed to me about, um, somebody asking about a dead. Tree in the right way, and it kinda looked like an ash. It's north, it's on the north side of the Kava Alley, right across from the apartments. So if you go, if you go down to Kava, turn left, follow up to the end of the alley where it runs into the apartments, and it's the last house on the left. They got one that looks like, you know, looking at the overhead, it looks like it's in the right way. I'm not, like I said, I'm not a tree guy, but it kinda looks like an ash, and that one's not even on the map at all, so I don't know, they asked about it, but it's not. One that's like a danger of something falling off, you know what I mean, so I don't.
It's in the right way, though, or is it not?
It's hard to tell, cuz the the overhead, looking at like the beacon, the Johnson kind of beacon, G I S maps, the line is right on, it splits the leaves on the trees. You can't really tell where the base is at. And those maps aren't a hundred percent accurate, it's an overhead shot with line strong, I mean.
Did we ever figure out what the right way is from center line?
Um, yeah.
Is it just by road?
It varies by road, yeah, and like, uh, like at the shop where we're agricultural property, it's further, I think, I don't know, that would be our setback, wouldn't it?
That's your setback, right?
Yeah, that'd be our setback, I'm not.
I thought it was thirty feet from the center, center line of the road.
It used to be thirty, it used to be sixty foot, right, center, center was thirty, it used to be.
Yeah, that's what it is, that's, I know on your street, Adam, when, when I built mine, yeah, when I built mine, it was thirty feet from the center line.
But look at Howard now, it's a lot lighter.
Exactly.
So they're gonna be different.
Those all be different.
Just, how about that, a tree.
Right, twenty five years.
Yeah.
Take some up to a hundred and twentieth. The stop sign, that's an ash tree dead, been dead for a couple of years, and that, that's gotta be in the right way, if not, it's gonna start dropping on that stop sign.
Yeah, it's.
It's gotta be in the right way.
It probably is, the only thing is it's not on that D N R list.
I don't care about the D N R.
No, I'm just, I'm just saying, that's why it hasn't been looked at as far as taking it down.
They didn't, they never even address that one, did they?
No, it's never been on my radar or anything I've told.
That's gonna be an issue pretty soon, that's been dead for a couple of years, and that's gonna, everybody, everybody stops there, if they don't stop there. Move it, it's gonna drop off somebody's vehicle, it's a big tree.
I guess.
And that's not ash?
Sure it's an ash.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure it's an ash, I didn't go and check, knocked the bark, but I think it is.
So what, so what's our, what's, what are we trying to accomplish here, do we want to, are we trying to figure out whether we're gonna spend more money on treating more trees or we got?
Well, what I, what I think we should do is identifying what trees we have left.
Isn't what the DNR came out last fall?
Yeah.
So we should have that.
They, they came out, it was pre-COVID, so it's, I don't remember the date.
So we're talking like over four, five years ago.
Right, and since that time, there's been.
We've reviewed stuff.
A number of them haven't been.
And Justin and Tanya created a spreadsheet.
Yeah.
H R Green has a copy of that, and we've tried just from what we've done recently. To keep track of what's been removed and what's left.
Each tree has an ID number, and we, and I went through with Tanya, we checked off the ones that were removed by ID number, based on that drawing.
And I added the ones from the DNR from last year, I added them, but then color coded them that they were removed.
So yeah, probably need an updated, if you wanna send me that, and I know it started off when I, when I started here about three years ago. It started off with about eighteen or nineteen on that list, and we removed five or six the first two years, I think. And then we went into the project the third year.
Yeah.
So. I'm not sure how many are left on there, I'd have to work with her and get an updated list. I think we've been talking about the same ash trees for five years now, I think we need to find and put something to bed. Whether, either get rid of them or be done with it.
Money to get rid of them.
Yeah, it costs quite a bit to remove trees too.
And always cer, so many of them can be treated, I mean, they can't all be treated, you know, I mean, there's something that passes treatment stage.
It doesn't do any good to treat trees that are infected, I mean, they're, they're done as it is.
When I started mine, five years, six years ago, it was not infected and.
I got two huge ones in my front yard, bark splitting all the way up the branch and they're, they didn't come down.
I've got, I've got a guy I already talked to, that's gonna check our big one in the back. And I, and I know there's two city trees around my property too, I can have him look at it and see where they're at. But the rest on that list, I don't know what else is out there.
Yeah, and I can hit the list of, yeah, and we'll talk about that.
And again, for any residents that are currently treating their trees, they would probably also be interested in it if their trees are viable.
Uh, that's on the. I would say if you looked at the list and the ones we removed, there's probably somewhere between six and ten trees left on that list. If you did five thousand a year for the next two years, you're gonna get removed in two years, or you spent ten thousand, you'd probably get removed in one year, but there probably. Ten thousand dollars worth of trees left to come, you know, to come down. I think we did, we did, uh, five trees for five thousand or something, but they were all, those, the three of them were in a row, and they were just cut, drop, cut, drop, cut, I mean.
Yeah.
Well, we probably had two years left if we went with the same type of system, we're in a few to three years.
I'll get the spreadsheet to Justin, and any that we have questions on, he can run out.
Yeah, if you send that to me, I can give a count on them and bring that next meeting and you can. Figure out how you're gonna go from there on it, I mean, we got left and where they're at and.
It's on a good project for next meeting. You, you were in motion, did you?
I sit here talking about trees for twenty minutes.
So, uh, so line item seventeen is the discussion of hours for the city hall, um. I was talking with Shelley about this, um, she's here every Monday night till six thirty.
Six.
Six.
Well, it depends on what, what type of meeting.
So, to help reduce some overtime hours, just go to our normal off at four o'clock. Except for the nights we have city hall meetings, and she'll stay open for those.
Yeah, it just, I, I, I was keeping track, honestly, I was, and I have the sheet in, in here somewhere. Um, I was keeping track of like, every Monday night that the, that I'm here from four to six o'clock, regardless of meeting or no meeting. What, I mean, what was the purpose of having those hours? I, I would, I would think it was to give the public the opportunity to come to city hall after hours or after, right?
After five.
Right, and, and there's been honestly about three times in the last year and a half that somebody has come into city hall after four. And one was a park board member just saw the light on, popped in to say, introduce themselves, and that was still when Tanya was here. A second time, our, our own city treasurer saw the light on, normally puts her bill in the drop box, but said, oh, I thought I'd just come in and saw the light on. So the, that's not, that's not benefiting the public by having you sit here getting, you know. I, I get on the nights that there's a meeting, I'm here anyway, and the door could still be open. If somebody wanted to come in, I'll, I'll certainly help them, but on those nights that P and Z doesn't have a meeting. Because they can't get a forum or, they just don't have a meeting, and P and Z meets it quite often. But those nights that there is no meeting, like the last two Mondays, I just sat here with, and not that I'm not working, I am working. But, but I think, yeah.
Obviously, I think that the longer hours are part of what Tanya wanted because she was off on Wednesdays.
I kinda thought this.
I think she was working longer on Monday because she had her Wednesday off.
So, and, and I, I honestly, guys, I have a lot of overtime every week because of meetings.
So you're saying just on Mondays?
Eight to four, eight to four, but of course, on the nights that there's meetings, the door will remain unlocked and open if somebody does.
Twice, twice a month we have citizens wanting to get your out here hours.
Three times if P and Z is meeting.
Three, so basically it'd be just one week, we, we wouldn't be doing it.
Possibly, yeah.
Motion to make hours changes.
Second.
So I'll probably put it out maybe in a few months, so, just to get, I mean, do you want me to, or do you want me to start it next week?
You've had three people in.
Hey, back to this though, you guys, here, like, take your packet. And I also included with the score sheets, because in the, in the RFP, remember there was a score sheet? So if you, if you do it on your homework, you wanna fill out a score sheet, otherwise, do you guys want to do a, um. A workshop to go through these together, I mean, I don't care how you do it, there's a lot of different ways to do it.
What I think we do is if you got, if you got any questions, just submit them to Shelley.
Yeah.